Future meeting day?
Okay.
So Paul Kelly has agreed to, Paul Kelly has agreed in principle to all of those stuff.
Okay, we're ready to get started. So we'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for May 20th.
Yeah, I've been out of communication all afternoon.
First item on the agenda is to confirm the future meeting dates. I think next Tuesday doesn't work for the town administrator who has a previous meeting scheduled, so the earliest we'd be looking at would be June 3rd, Tuesday.
I think so.
Does that work for everyone?
June 3rd is okay with me. Yeah?
When we get to the chairman's report, one of the things I put on the agenda was to talk about the meeting scheduling and format. I guess we could talk about it further than one thing I would like to do is maybe move the time the meeting starts to seven o'clock rather than 6:30, if that's agreeable to everybody.
What's the reasoning for that?
Well, a couple of reasons. I think it's just more convenient, given that we all have day jobs and obviously we're here at 6:30, but seven, I think, the warrant committee starts at 7:30, other committees start at 7:30. This board at the past, the times have changed pretty much based on the work schedules or whatnot of people who are on the board. But I also think that citizen speak, you know, a lot of people kind of get to citizen speak because we do start at 6:30. If we started a little bit later, I think it would give more people an opportunity to come, but primarily the reason I suggest it is really for convenience for all of us since we all have day jobs and sometimes we have morning meetings on the days of an evening meeting and...
Yeah, seven probably would be a more convenient time. I guess the only concern is what's it going to do to the other end of the meeting?
Sometimes you're in the budget. We're here till midnight.
Well, we're already here sometimes till midnight anyway.
Can't go any later than that anyways.
But, you know, if we do go to three meetings a month and we start at seven, I think that would work. I know we've talked about that in the past. That would be my preference. I don't know about both of you. We can talk more about it when we get further on the agenda. I know we have people here, but...
Would this be something you consider after the summer? Because our agenda won't be packed and it would be nice to get out a little earlier during the summer.
Start at 6:30 during the summer and go to seven in the fall?
Wait until September comes. Would that be agreeable?
That'd be okay with me.
Fine, me.
Yeah, okay. So do we want to pick a date? Is June 3rd?
June 3rd works.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Do we want to schedule any other dates while we're on this item?
Are we going to go every other week, 17th, or is that...
I always think we should probably meet three times a month. I don't know during the summer whether, December we might want to meet twice a month. I think we should...
Yeah, it may be played by year if there's enough on the agenda, then throw an extra meeting in.
I'll be gone from the, under 22nd of June until the end of June. I'll be gone for that week.
So 17th will work.
17th?
17th will work, yeah.
Okay. June 3rd and June 17th. Okay. Next item is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Move approval of the payroll and vendor warrants?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Ananimos. Next item is citizen speak. Do we have anyone? Cheryl, for citizen speak.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to give a quick update on what's been going on with MCAI. Our brief was filed last week in the First Circuit Court, so we don't know where that's going to go or what will happen next. We will have to find out who's going to argue it for us, whether it'll be one of us, so we'll have help with that, but we'll keep you apprised of that. We had a meeting two weeks ago at the library, and it was an excellent meeting because it was publicized and we have some new, very enthusiastic members. In fact, one of them is in communications and she's taken over the management of the Facebook page, which is now called Milton Citizens versus Plains. And because of these new members, we're quickly gaining momentum, and our next meeting is scheduled for Saturday morning, June 7th, at 9:30 at the library. And I'm once again asking the Board of Selectmen to consider appointing a formal committee. There are many good and valid reasons for this request. The committee itself would have a formal citizen speak, which would give citizens a place to have their voices heard, taking the burden off the Board of Selectmen so they can focus on everything else they're working on. The committee would be able to keep track of similar complaints, similar to what the town of Belmont does, so we would want to request that all the complaints come through us so we really have a good handle on how many people are complaining and who the noise is affecting. And the committee would be able to educate town residents and be an advocate for them. And of course, if such a committee is formed, we would expect Milton CAC rep Chris Sambudo to be appointed as a member of the committee. And that's my report for tonight.
Okay, thanks, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl. Anyone else for citizen speak?
Pete Jackson, live on Capen Street. I find it kind of difficult to participate in the 131 Central Avenue or Elliott Street public hearing because citizens have to make their comments as part of citizen speak before the hearing and can't speak during part of the hearing, and we don't have the benefit of hearing the discussion or the presentation, so we're always at least a meeting behind whatever the discussion is. So we really can't be current in terms of the advice and comments that we make. So based on that, and it's a fluid situation, Katie, just before the meeting, you updated me a little bit on where things were here. So since I have no idea what's going on and I haven't heard the discussion, I decided I'd make my comments in the form of some questions. And because of what I've now learned tonight, learned as kind of the status of things, some of these questions may be outdated or whatever, but here goes. And I don't expect you necessarily to answer them, but they're just for your consideration as you deal with this issue. Is the town still attempting to negotiate a demolition agreement in lieu of issuing a demolition order under Chapter 139? And I think that's right. That's true. Is the town ready financially and from a contracting standpoint to initiate demolition of the building, either in conjunction with the owners or by itself if demolition does not occur based on the town's demolition agreement? Are asbestos removal operations imminent, as we've been told by the owner that they're imminent? And are, is this fencing and signage that have been put up, you know, is it another smoke screen from the owner? Are the asbestos removal operations, again, which I think are supposed to be happening right away? I believe they're under the jurisdiction of the DEP and not the town, and I wonder how the town and neighbors can be assured that those operations are done with due concern for public safety. Has mass housing taken any further action on the 40B application based on the comments that the town submitted? Or do we know if any action on that is imminent? And would the town consider, or is the town considering putting the town's parcel out to bid again without first having the existing building demolished? The public has no idea what's going on down here, and I think it'd be helpful, and I'll leave these questions with you guys, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter.
It's Peter.
Anyone else for citizen speak tonight?
Hi, Peter.
Hi, Peter.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Peter Mullen, 19 Gaskins Road. I also wanted to come and speak with regard to Henry's. I tried to do some investigation today during the day on the Department DEP website, and as I understand it, Conley Construction has given notice to DEP that they were going to begin asbestos removal as early as, I think it was February 14th, and I think I saw data indicating that it was ongoing through July 1st. There's also been notices sent to DEP with regard to a demolition contract. I believe that was supposed to start date was May 12th, and it was supposed to go through, I think, some date in August, August 18th. You know, I think there is concern within the neighborhood with regard to knowing what's going on. I don't know to what extent the selectmen are informed with regard to any of these matters, but I think it would be helpful, useful, to get that information out. I think to the extent that Conley Construction is hearing any of these remarks or, there are people in the neighborhood who would like to know. I think there are people that are concerned about asbestos removal. As I understand it, there has been a survey done of the building. I don't know whether the survey was the complete building. I fully understand that demolishing that building is going to be a complex thing to do. There's a lot of different permits that are needed. It's a tight location. I think as much cooperation as possible would be helpful. That having been said, I think it's the fact that the selectmen had under consideration, you know, a demolition order that has moved this process along, and I would urge you to continue that process. And as I understand it, one of the things on your agenda tonight is to conclude your hearing and to enter an order. I understand the reasons for the delays and the extensions that have been granted. I think those have been good things. It's a process that you can always stop, but it seems to me that it's only because of your pressure that this thing has moved along, and I'd urge you to continue with that pressure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Anyone else for citizen speak? No? Okay, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is a meeting with Tabor Keely, who is our representative to the Mass, rather, the Metropolitan Area Planning Committee. Tabor, thanks for joining us tonight.
Tabor?
Evening. Let me just hand out if I could. I've got...
Thank you.
So I know some of you may be aware of why I'm here, but I'm your appointment to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and it's a three-year appointment, and it expires at the end of this month, so I waited till the last possible minute to come before you. Just a brief description on what MAPC is. You can see the map. It's 101 cities and towns. We're a regional planning agency. Milton is actually part of the Three Rivers Interlocal Council, and the Three Rivers are Napontet, Charles, Canoe River.
Thank you.
And we are a coordinator for a number of planning initiatives from the state level, from the federal level, and also a coordinator of federal dollars down to state transportation projects. A number of things that we may, you may be aware of or at least recognize, local technical assistance that we may be involved with would be East Edom Strategic Action Plan, where they redesigned the East Edom retail and some housing. Quincy Parking Plan in Wallaston, taking some MBTA parking and reapportioning it for residential. Foxborough Stormwater Bylaw being written now for the town of Foxborough. A number of casino development review projects that we've done for Milford, Everett. Maybe Somerville hasn't been voted yet, but I believe we're going to be starting Somerville soon. Housing production plan for Everett, a revised production plan for Littleton, theirs is expiring. Some environmental work that we've been doing, collaborative funding, stormwater management initiative, also actually with the Napontet River Watershed, about 14 towns and the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. EPA has new regulations for stormwater management, and the DEP has funded this, and the Napontet River Watershed actually happens to be a contractor on this. Milton does take significant advantage of collective procurement. The police department, along with Curry College, I think, have 10 new vehicles in the past 12 months, vans and other things. Fire department, in 2012, purchased a pumper truck. DPW, mostly minimal design, but they do a lot of collective procurement work for the sidewalk replacement in front of St. Mary's off of Brook Road, for instance. I'm sure we can probably get a better description from the horse's mouth right here, but the, some of the other things that Arlington's redoing, all of their streetlights through LEDs and aiming to save a fair amount of money, and there's, there are things that MAPC can do to get you to that spot. Transportation, we are the purveyor of the checkbook for the MPO, for local projects, with all the federal money that comes through and some of the things that we are behind and I have lobbied for. For instance, the Adalane for the Route 128 project, which we're nearly done, but now we're speeding all that traffic down to Route 95, and the interchange at Route 95 is not done, and at 250 to now 275 million dollars, may take a little longer. But that's some of the things that we've been doing from the Three Rivers Interlocal Council. Also annually, we are, we put together a breakfast for legislators and town officials to get together and see how the other half lives and also to lobby for things that you need. Some of the things that we've done in that package of yours, there are a budget for the 2015. There is a, at the end of it is a summary, and you can see under the summary that we are almost $10 million less than last, and that is mostly Homeland Security money that the federal government is forcing to be spent all in one year. They took 2010, 11, 12, and 13 and crammed it all into the end of this fiscal year, which runs through October. And we are the local check writing authority for Homeland Security, so when you see the little robots that are searching bombs and other things that State Police Tactical Force have, all that kind of stuff was procured through our work, and it's, most of the work that we do is the paperwork and the pricing for that type of thing. But this is the, this budget reflects a fair amount of consolidation those four years into one, and the next year we'll probably be back to a more normal eight to nine million dollar budget. So I think Paula said she had a letter that was prepared, and if you are interested, I would be happy to accept another three-year appointment. Any questions on any of this stuff?
I want an appointment to reappoint Mr. Keely.
Right. I'm happy to, if you have any questions, I'm happy to attempt an answer.
Any questions or comments?
At your budget here, Tabor, the 2014, is that 22 million?
Yes.
And then the projected one for 15 is 12 million, 800,000?
That's right.
What's the difference? I haven't done through it.
Well, it's, the piece that's missing in there is the pass-through money, and we write the checks for the Homeland Security, and the feds got behind on apportioning, or closing out 2010, closing out 2011, 12, 13. And I'm not, I don't know the details of why, but those budgets were not finalized, so some of the money was withheld, and it's, I think the folks in Congress finally got fed up with this and said, that's it. We're going to force everybody to finish up. And that's where the difference is. It doesn't affect our bottom line. Our basic budget goes from about 6.1 down to 5.8 million, which is our internal budget, and what Milton pays for is around 8,000 or 8,100, thereabouts, for assessment to support us, which totals about a million dollars, so it's less than 20% of MAPC's bottom line. Most of our money does come from projects that we rent ourselves out as an engineering outfit or as a planning group, and, or collective procurement is about 600,000 or 700,000 dollars a year. So those are various places where MAPC is able to keep a staff of, I think, 65 or 70 people. So that's the difference.
Yeah, being somewhat familiar and with Old Colony Planning Council, which is obviously a lot smaller, but basically, planning councils are just into everything, literally.
You know, it's funny that the Mass DOT has decided that MAPC could be the holder of the checkbook for the federal funds. Why? Because they want some deniability, they want to be able to push it off onto somebody else, a little bit of that. And it's also, we take a very small fee, but then our accounting department is able to handle all that, and the HR goes for CTPS, which is a part of Mass DOT. A lot of those traffic signalization and planning and other things that go along with it, so it is, it's a matter of convenience.
Now, it really is amazing the amount of benefit that the city and town get for, like you say, such a small contribution.
Yeah.
We pay our contribution through the cherry sheet, and like I know in Old Colony's case, their total state, city and town contribution is like 350,000.
Right.
It's a tiny, tiny number compared to, you know...
Yeah, so the, MAPC is the largest in the state, so when the LEDs came out and the DEP wanted to do something, they came to us, and we are now working through the other planning councils to do LED procurement because, you know, we've already got the people on staff, but it's...
Is there grant money out there for?
There is, yeah. I couldn't tell you, but I will say the town of Arlington's website, they've just gone through it, and they have a whole story about it, and it's actually pretty positive. It will pay for itself, but not in the first year. It's about two or maybe three years to pay back.
I guess our problem is the way we pay for streetlights anyway, is that we just pay a flat fee for them?
They also, the town of Sharon just went through a re-management program for their streetlights without LEDs, but part of it was buying some of them back from the utilities and re-managing, and who's responsible for replacing the bulbs and the whole thing, and I couldn't tell you the details, but it is something that, you know, you could look into, I suppose.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tabor.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments or questions for Tabor?
To reappoint?
We have a motion to reappoint Tabor, so to a three-year term, which is the length of your current term.
That's correct.
So I move to approve the appointment of Tabor Keely to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to serve through May 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tabor.
Thank you, Tabor. Let me sign this afterwards. Okay, the next item on our agenda was the senior tax work-off program. We're going to defer that. There's some revisions being made, and we'll put that on the agenda for a later, a later meeting. Number seven, the High Street pole location. Do we have anyone? Joe Lynch is here. Joe, do you want to come up and join us? Do we have anyone from NSTAR coming in tonight? Anyone from NSTAR?
I think we've got a couple that are quick to hold.
Okay. This is a continued hearing. Is there anyone else here who wanted to address the board regarding the High Street utility pole relocation? Okay. Joe, I know you've had some follow-up discussions with Mr. Kelly, who was here at our last meeting, prior to the town meeting, to discuss some concerns that he had.
Yes, we met last week as a group, and I'm happy to report, we did a little research, and Mr. Kelly is convinced that the pole location, as it has been relocated, and I'm going to emphasize "has been relocated," and I'll admit later on why that's the case, is really the only place it can be, given the fact that he didn't realize there was a right-of-way granted to the back property on, adjacent to his lot, that would otherwise compromise his ability to do what he was contemplating sometime in the future, but it negates that whole possibility without restructuring the entire survey and deeds of both properties. So what was struck as an agreement was the stone wall that goes across the front of the property can be reconstructed as part of this project, the High Street project, up to the extent that it wouldn't defeat the right-of-way. So he's satisfied with that, and I've had follow-up emails, not conversation, but nowadays email strings seem to be conversational. Late this afternoon, and I guess by virtue of him not being here, that's just, you know, proof that he was in fact satisfied with that answer. Now, I did emphasize poles as the current relocated. Typically, a utility company will come to this Board of Selectmen seeking a petition for a grant of location, permission to put a utility in a location that's the town-owned property, like a right-of-way. Typically, it's something that they're asking for their facility to be because of something that they want. This is actually the opposite. This is the town project building, rebuilding the entire street, and we were obligating them to relocate the utility from where permission was already granted and putting it in a location where it wouldn't be in the way of that project. So it being the initiative of the town, still requires a grant of location to put it, memorialize a document in the town clerk's office, that permission, but it was really my decision, and I admit it readily, that this should happen first because time being of the essence in inevitably my long career on construction projects, and you've all witnessed it, maybe you don't understand why perhaps, but driving down the roadway on a newly constructed road, you've seen utility poles still in the street with barrels around them, but for all else, the project's finished. So not wanting that to happen, High Street being as narrow as it is, we, very early on, approached the utility company and said, get out of our way, we're coming up the street. So it was, it was my direction to take that lead.
Makes sense. Joe, can you, can you explain why the pole would affect the right-of-way to the rear property?
Like, would?
Why it would if it was moved again?
Sure. Yeah. Without getting into the details, I'm sorry the public don't have a chance to see this from home, I don't think, but researching, the front property in its entirety is Mr. Kelly's, the back property is another owner. Quite coincidentally, the other two properties along Elliott Street itself and a fifth property to the left were all part of the Line family. It was a trust back in the turn of the century, turn of the last century, in the 1900s, and through that estate and liquidation of the state, various family members got various tracts of land and granted each other's rights of passage and repassage. So by definition of where the right-of-way is, it's contrary to what Mr. Kelly thought, which if you know the property, if you're looking at it from High Street, his drive, the driveway to the rear property and his driveway is to the far left of the property. He always thought that that was the right-of-way. It isn't. It's 12 feet north of that and then an additional eight feet wide, right up the middle of his property.
So who owns the...
The driveway?
The driveway.
Kelly owns it, and I'm not about to get into any opinion of legal rights or whatnot, but since the driveway's been there for so long, a case could be made of a right of adverse possession to extend the right-of-way to include that piece as well. We're not going there. The pole is literally 18 inches off of the end of the right-of-way, and relocating it closer to the stairway wouldn't, wouldn't give him any greater advantage. Moving it where he wanted it would put it in the right-of-way, and neither of which strip of land is, that would be remaining, allows for him to have parking off of High Street directly. It's simply not wide enough. And we went over this, you know, with him. He wasn't aware of, he simply assumed that the driveway was the right-of-way.
So he's, he's pretty happy with this?
No, he's not happy. He's satisfied with the answer, but he's not happy with the, the right-of-way is where it is. But he understands it and he accepts it as accurate, but would prefer to have a different answer. And he's happy to get the wall, which is what we, prior to the last public hearing, when this public hearing opened, we had had a similar meeting in the minds without the revelation of the right-of-way, and we thought we had reached an agreement that the wall would be something we would do as part of the project. Every other wall in the street had been rebuilt, but his. But the pole had to stay where it was. We thought we had that agreement, but contrary to what we thought, he came into the meeting and voiced other concerns. So I think we're, I'm certain that as of last week's discussion and the follow-up on Friday and then a follow-up again today, that he is satisfied with the, with the result.
Any other comment or discussion? And just for the record, I'll confirm, is there anyone else who wishes to address the public hearing on the High Street utility pole relocation? Seeing none, we have a motion?
I make a motion to grant, grant an alteration in the location of four existing utility poles on High Street as follows. Westerly side approximately 100 feet south of Elliott Street, and four poles 56/2, 56.3, 56.4, 56.5.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry for the confusion on this request.
Thanks for coming in tonight, Joe, and for resolving that with Mr. Kelly. Okay, so that will close that public hearing. And the next item on our agenda is the continued hearing under Chapter 139 of the general laws regarding 131 Elliott Street. We have Representative Town Council Brandon Moss, Brian McDonough representing Carrick Realty. Joe Prudential, why don't you come up and join us at the table as well? Before we turn it over to the attorneys to give us an update on what the discussions they've been having, the last time, we were here before town meeting was May 1st, and at that time we had some issues that were raised by Mr. McDonough's client regarding the impact of the proposed demolition agreement on the Chapter 40. the impact of the proposed demolition agreement on the Chapter 40B proposal. And, you know, we continued it at that time to allow you to have more discussions and do some further work on this. And we, we had some meetings before town meeting each night, the four nights that we met, but we, we continued this other hearing without taking any discussion or any action on it at that time. So this is a follow-up to our most recent meeting on May 1st. And Brandon, would you like to start and give us an update on the negotiations? Obviously, you've been in communication with town administrators, with Joe, with others, and we've seen revised draft of this agreement. Maybe you could summarize it for us.
Sure. So there's been some changes since the last version of the agreement and basically the parties have tentatively reached mutual understanding, in fact, to the point where the property owner has signed an agreement. It's certainly up to the selectmen to sign the agreement as well tonight. But in terms of, you know, just going through the pertinent changes, the prior version of the agreement focused, and I think a stumbling block had been, on when the demolition permits would be applied for. Demolition permit, the MBTA license, the order, the notice of intent in order to get an approval from the Conservation Commission. That is out of this agreement. What's in this agreement is essentially a drop dead date for when this building must be demolished and must be removed.
That's better.
And for both parties. And the, the prior agreement said six months from when demolition permit issues. This agreement says September 30th is a hard and fast date for the building to be down, for both buildings to be down. The Connelly Building or the Carrick Realty Trust Building and for the town building. Those buildings must both be down by September 30th. It does say, though, to avoid having this be, you know, an 11th hour situation, that the parties shall diligently apply for all the approvals that are necessary, and it lists those three approvals. The MBTA license, the Conservation Commission approval, and the demolition permit. Also, on top of that, there's a clause, so the, so those dates to apply, it's, the party shall diligently apply. In terms of the, the status of the building, I mean, the party shall work diligently towards ensuring that this is taken, both buildings are taken, their buildings are taken down, that if for some reason there's any, you know, request for information, each side can ask the other as to what's going on, what's the status, if it looks like the building's just sitting there, they can request the status and it shall be promptly responded to by the other party. In terms of the building itself, because this is somewhat of a moving target, if for some reason the building, the party shall monitor their buildings. If there's a need to take corrective action because of safety issues, each party has an onus to do that in the agreement as a contractual requirement. In terms of the IFB, the invitation for bids, the town has a July 1st date to do so. The language that talked about the contingency for town meeting funding and that out clause, that's out of this agreement.
It's moved anywhere at this point, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's moved anywhere.
Yeah. So, so that's in there. In terms of the party still will collaborate and have their engineers, their agents collaborate and cooperate in good faith, that's still in the agreement. The provision that referenced allowing the town to use a portion of the building for, the Carrick building for operate, or Carrick property for staging, that's still in the agreement. That hasn't changed. The portion about accessing from the Carrick building, that's still in this agreement. Also about the, the release, there's mutual releases so that one party doesn't say, "Well, you, my, my building was damaged because of the other building being worked on or demolished and removed." That's still in there. Also, the release, I'm sorry, the dismissal of the lawsuit, there's a lawsuit involving the two Chapter 143 orders. Upon the removal and demolition of both buildings, that lawsuit will be out. They'll be dismissed. That, that's basically what was in the prior agreement. The release itself was, the clause for the release was consolidated. So the clause for the release was consolidated and somewhat reworded, but basically it applies to past, present, and future employees, officers, officials, trustees, and the like. It's somewhat broad and also, you know, implies personally and officially. And also, once each party's building's down, and essentially an incentive to get this done as soon as possible, that party gets the benefit of a release. So if the town gets its building down, the Carrick Realty Trust releases the town and vice versa. So there's an incentive to get the buildings down soon because it also operates as a release. The language that was in one of the last versions of this agreement reports tonight, which reference if the town exercises its authority under Chapter 139 or Chapter 143, that language basically, this agreement would be null and void if the town were to use those as the enforcement option. The rest of it, the legalese, about the counterparts and, and, you know, the parties are authorized and the agreement will be assigned to any successor to Carrick. That's all in here as well. So generally, those are the pertinent changes and the summary of what's stayed in place.
Yeah, I think it's a fair agreement. It certainly gives the Conleys that room it needs, I think, just to, you know, do what it has to do and, you know, just so everybody knows also, the, the original, the original draft that, that came through had a, was it on August 31st? Tear down from the Conleys. We pushed it out, not the Conleys, to September 30th because our funding won't be available till July 1st. So just to give us enough time to get it down, but I think it's a good agreement.
Mr. McDonough, did you want to add anything on behalf of your client?
No, I think Brandon did a nice job of summarizing it and we're obviously in agreement with the draft that currently exists. In fact, we've, we've signed it and we're hopeful that the town will sign it as well.
Before both of you came in, we had citizens speak and we did have a couple of people who made some points, and I think this would probably be the right time to address at least some of them. And Joe Prondak, maybe these are points that are more appropriate for you. We, one of the questions related to asbestos removal and environmental issues, we have had some inquiries about asbestos removal and Joe, I know you've been in touch with Stephen Connelly, and is there anything that you could maybe just give an update on for the, for the public's benefit? As, we just need the microphone.
So I'm certainly not an asbestos or hazardous materials expert, but what I do know of it, I have seen the hazardous materials inventory, in other words, the Conleys have had, or through their demolition contractor, have hired a subcontractor that, subcontractor that does abatements of that sort. I have seen the, the report, although I don't have a copy of it, so, so they've recorded the majority of the material that's in there, asbestos-containing material that's in there is what's called a transite panel. And that's very similar to, if anybody's familiar with asbestos shingles on your house, it's the same type of material. It's, it's not the, it's not the pipe covering type material that's very, very, what they call friable and, and when it gets exposed to the air, it can travel around and, and it's more, it's, it's, it's more of a nuisance. So this material is not that. And so the DEP doesn't get directly involved in these types of things. The way that, the way it works is, is the owner or the proponent is, has to hire a licensed hazardous materials removal company and they do notify the DEP. And they have to, they have to give documentation as to how and where the materials are removed and, and where they're taken to, and they have to provide records to the DEP for that. There will be some, so it, and basically the material, when they work in the area, they tint it off with plastic and they seal it up with tape and they remove the asbestos and they contain it, and then they bring it out to trucks that takes it to approved landfills. And then they notify the DEP of where that went. There are, however, some portions of the building and one somewhat new portion of the building that basically is unsafe to work in. There is a, there is a, a new collapse, so to speak, in one area in the center of the building. And that's on the second floor and the, and the ceiling above that is, there's a lot of transite panels. So some of the building, as we knew going into this, some of the building has to be taken down as what's called hot. So those areas of the building, you know, they're wetted down as they're removed, the stuff goes into, into trucks, it's covered up and it's taken to approved landfills. All of the material in that particular area is treated as contaminated, so to speak. So, so that's.
But Joe, if I understand, then the, the material that's in there is a very hard material?
Yes, it's a rigid material.
So as long as you don't saw it or something like that, then it's not going to get air worn?
Yeah, it's put on with nails, so, so it does have to get, it does get broken up as it's taken off. But again, it's broken up in a, in a contained area. They have to seal off the area. And then it has to be vacuumed and swabbed and all of that before they can take the plastic back down.
I think that was the biggest concern, was the public safety, you know, concern over removals. I think you've answered a lot of that.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I think you were out there recently at the building with Mr. Connelly, just to.
Yeah, Chief, Fire Chief Grant and I were out there last week with Steve Connelly and their demolition contractor to go through some of the buildings and kind of lay, just, just to be clear that which areas of the building were safe to work in and which were not. And naturally, we want to get as much of the material abated as we can. So, so we're trying to be cautious, we're trying to be liberal. It's, it's, it's a fine line there, so, you know, certainly the demolition contractor understood the concerns. They've been made very aware of the areas of the building that, that can't be worked in, and that's, of course, the area of the, of the initial collapse in, in an area immediately adjacent to that. And then the area of the new collapse certainly can't be worked in. And then there's, there's another portion of the building that, that, you know, most westerly end, that really doesn't, doesn't need any abatement, so. I think we're pretty clear and I think the fire chief has a good idea now. Fire chief was concerned because, you know, God forbid, should there be a mishap during the abatement, the fire chief wants to be able to, they, they have an arrangement where the, where the abatement company will contact the fire department and let them know each day what areas of the building they're working in. So should there ever be a need for rescue or anything like that, the fire department has a heads up and knows how to go about that.
Our portion of the building in terms of the hazardous material, we haven't done our study yet, correct?
We haven't finished our study. I'm waiting for a price on, on getting access to that building. Green Environmental is ready to go with that, with that continuation of the survey. We have been advised to get them up on the roof as well and to take a sample of the roofing material. Because if we don't do that, if we don't certify that that's clean, it could put the bid at risk of appeal. So we're going to arrange for that either, either by a mechanical lift or a fire truck.
Couple of the other questions that Mr. Jackson mentioned during citizens' speak were about the financial cost, whether MHP has taken any action. And I think on the MHP question, unless there was something new today, I'm looking at Bill Clark, and we have not heard anything yet regarding the 40B application. Financial cost, just for reporting purposes at town meeting, we did have an appropriation for this. It was through the reserve fund article and an agreement with the Warren Committee was that 250,000 would be set aside for the cost of demolition of the town-owned land. So, so that is, that is the proposed funding for, and it has been appropriated for the cost of the demolition of the town building.
And then we are proceeding forward with our request proposal, but we need the hazardous material study before we can really get that proposal out of the street.
Yes. So I expect to have, I have, I expect to have the ball rolling full steam ahead and within the next couple of days on all of that.
Brandon, what happens if, if the building doesn't come down by September 30th?
In that case, there's, there's three options. This agreement is a contract, so this is an enforceable contract. So that, that's option A. And I mean, option B would be the Chapter 139 route. The risk is that the Chapter 139 route and this agreement are competing. So going Chapter 139, and option C is Chapter 143. Options B and C cancel out option A. So there's three options.
But we'd have to wait till September 30th to begin the Chapter 139 again, yeah?
Well, if, if it gets closer towards September, what, you know, what I put into this agreement was, was basically that if there's a concern by the town, and the town will know because it's the town's Conservation Commission, it's the town's Building Commissioner, you know, if it gets close and it gets too close and the permits haven't been applied for or issued, I think the town certainly would have been, be within its reason to say, "Hey, what's going on? We got this agreement." This agreement requires diligence. Diligence isn't waiting until September 30th.
Does, does it say it in here in the agreement?
It does. It says each party shall diligently apply for the necessary approvals for demolishing and removing that party's own building. And it lists the three that I had mentioned. And it does separately say that if at any time either of the parties shall, should conclude in good faith that the other is not working diligently towards achieving, achieving the demolition by the stated deadline, which would be the September 30th date, it may notify the other party and request the status, which shall be promptly responded to by that other party. So it's in, in there in two respects.
I think, I think we have plenty of options on that.
Request the status. How long do they have to, to answer, answer that when you request the status?
Well, I put in here just promptly, which, which hopefully is not, you know, more than, you know, hopefully not more than a day or two. But it says promptly to avoid, sometimes reasonable is used, but I think reasonable's too long in these circumstances, so I try to use the word promptly. I mean, if it happens, it's kind of a judgment call, it's prompt.
Right. I have a question on number five. It says, the third line, well, actually from the start, Carrick Realty Trust authorizes the town and its contractors to use the portion of the Carrick property at the corner of Central Ave and Elliott Street for staging operations for the town's contractors to demolish and remove the town building. However, if the town opts to do so, it will assume to itself the obligation and costs of demolishing and removing that portion of the Carrick building that is approximately 1,000 to 1,500 square feet. So do I interpret this as we're going to be using taxpayer money to be taking down Connelly's building?
Well, it's a trade-off in that, in that circumstance with number five. There's no, there's a piece that overhangs from the Carrick building that overhangs onto the town property. The alternative is if the town does not use the Carrick property for staging, the town would have to incur additional cost for staging, potentially, to stage in the street or somewhere else. So it's not so much using taxpayer property as essentially as a trade-off.
It's actually the, the sentence, "If the town opts to do so, what if the town opts not to do so? Then what happens?"
The town does not have to demolish and remove the overhanging property. That's going to be the Carrick's responsibility to deal with.
The practical problem you'd have, though, is, is you would have to, there would be additional cost because once you take our building down, that thing comes down with it. And it doesn't stay, there's nothing to hold it up if our building's not there. So either way, if we're taking down our building, no matter where we staged from, we'd either have to, if we didn't want to take it down, we'd have to somehow shore it up so it doesn't come down, I would think.
Well, who's going to take their building down first? If Connelly's going to take his building down first, then this 1,500 square feet should come with it. I mean, the agreement is in there that if they damage our building, it's okay because it's coming down anyway.
Concurrent, concurrent demolition and removal in Section 1. That's because that's what we've been saying, that both, the consensus by all the experts here is that, and I'm talking to Joe and some of the demolition experts, is that the buildings really need to come down together.
We have so many revisions, it's hard to keep up here.
That, that item five has been in it since the beginning, I can tell you that.
It has, yes. Do we have other comments, questions? Dennis, did you have other, other comments?
I did, but go ahead if you have, if you want to make a comment.
You have another comment?
Good. Go ahead, yeah, I'm good.
One thing that, that Mr. Mullin said before, during citizens' speak before you came in, and I think it's true that they're really going, this is now our fourth hearing and this 139 hearing process has really brought us to this point, is the first night we were here for the 139 hearings was when we decided to see whether we could get any kind of an agreement among the parties. So, so I think the process and thanks to town council, the town administrator, certainly Joe Prondak and, and others have got us to the point where we are, where we have what I think is. have got us to the point where we are, where we have what I think is a good agreement.
We've had these agreements before, though, and look what happened, you know? That's my only fear. We get to September 15th, there's still no permits even close to being approved, then what? I see a lot of loopholes in this, to be quite truthful. And if I was the owner of the building down there, I would love this agreement.
What are the loopholes, Dennis, that we should go through?
It doesn't clearly state that if you don't meet the deadlines, this is what's going to happen. It doesn't really say that. It just says, you know, if somebody doesn't cooperate, we're going to send you a letter and ask you why you're not cooperating. And then you're going to respond to us pretty quickly. We just talked about that a few minutes ago.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McDonough.
The only thing I was going to say is that you always have 139 at your disposal, and you can deploy it at any time you want, really.
I mean, I would go with this agreement, and sorry to cut you off.
That's okay.
I think it's not a bad agreement, but I would love to do the 139 at the same time, like I said before.
But you can't do it at the same time, because then you'll nullify the agreement. So we can continue 139, but we cannot do one, we cannot bring
I've never heard that before. That's the first time I've heard that.
That was put in the agreement.
The idea is that we would continue the 139 hearing, which we have been doing now three or four times. So the 139 hearing would keep being continued, because we do want to have that option available to us. If this agreement is not followed, you know, assuming we assign it tonight and we approve it, if there's a breach of the agreement or we have any reason that the agreement's not followed, then we want to have that option available to us.
But we got to start it again.
No. If we continue it, then no, we would not.
So that's just number two here?
Correct.
So what's the date for the continuance?
We haven't decided yet, but basically, again, keep in mind that, you know, we would have two choices. We could, if it did come down to the fact that the building wasn't coming down, we could go to court and try and enforce the agreement. Or we could go forward with 139, which would nullify the agreement. You see, go either way.
I think, as Brandon mentioned at our last meeting, we'd be requesting specific performance of this agreement. So we'd be going in, asking the judge to enforce the agreement and require that the building be demolished. So we would have that available to us as a contract remedy.
And the other option, too, is if, you know, because of the clause that talks about monitoring and making sure the building's safe, that as long as it's out there, there is that risk of it being a hazard. That, you know, there, because there's language in this agreement, it's my opinion that that's also grounds for specific performance to actually order, you know, compliance in terms of securing the building. And that's an all-term to 139.
Any other comments? Joe, did you want to add anything? Or Bill? I know Bill Clark has had some involvement in this.
The only thing for the record, since this is a 139 hearing, is that, you know, based on our inspection the other day, I think it's important to note for the record that the building has, that the deterioration of the building has progressed. And there are now additional safety concerns. And to the point where I would say, and again, for the record, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Collins. I've worked with him, engineer, many times over the years. I know he's a good engineer. But I think at this point, the deterioration has kind of snowballed. And I would say that his report currently is less valid. And should it come up again, that we're trying to stand on the report that says the building is not a hazard, that report needs to be updated and
That report is a bit dated.
Yeah. Mr. Collins really needs, would need to see the current conditions of the building. And just saying that, but I think that's why we added in the agreement. It's important that both parties just keep an eye on the building now.
And monitor.
And if something starts to fail even more quickly, then we need to address it right away.
I think that's fair, yeah.
That's really all I have to add.
Yeah, I mean, you're not suggesting that the Connollys spend any more money on another engineering study where the building's going to come down anyways?
No, no, only if somehow things, we didn't come to an agreement and
There's no question that the public safety concern is what's driving this whole process and continues to be a concern for everyone involved.
First and foremost, the building has to come down. And then we can worry about what to do with pieces of land and everything else. But the public safety issue, I think, is first and foremost. And this appears to be the fastest route for that to happen.
A lot of work has gone into revising this agreement in the last couple of weeks since we were here on May 1st. And I'm comfortable with the agreement as it currently stands, revised as of this afternoon. Mr. McDonough, has your client already signed this?
My client has signed. I would move to approve the agreement between the Town of Milton and Carrick Realty Trust concerning the demolition and removal of the buildings at 131 Elliott Street and Zero Central Avenue.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two to one. Okay, thank you. And we'll want to continue the Chapter 131 hearing to
Further move
Date certain.
I would further move that we continue the hearing under Massachusetts General law, Chapter 139 concerning 131 Elliott Street property to September 2nd, was it?
Tuesday, I believe.
September 2nd, 2014.
Any discussion on that motion? That would at least give us some time to know where we're, obviously, we'll be monitoring this as we go along. We have obligations under this contract as well as Carrick, so that will give us some time, if things are not progressing, to take the issue up again.
Right.
I would expect that by that date
We'll know, yeah.
It'll be coming down, or if not.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous on that motion to continue the hearing. So the Chapter 139 hearing is continued until September 2nd.
And I think just one other question that was asked during Citizen Speak was, what is going to happen with our piece of land? At this point, we really don't know. First and foremost, we want to get the building down, because there are safety issues. So that's the paramount issue. From there, you know, we're open to many different routes, I think, with respect to that. But I don't think we've made a decision at this point.
That's a question for later day, but tonight, the concern, as it has been for in recent weeks, months, Joe would say years, is the condition of the building, so. Anyone anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We have the originals here. Should Attorney McDonough leave?
I'll leave our signed originals and
Yeah, we can coordinate with Attorney.
At least one fully executed.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess if you're willing to leave them here, we can sign them after the meeting and then
Yeah.
And then we'll get an original back to Mr. McDonough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
All right, next item on our agenda is the towing bids for the next three fiscal years. Police Chief Richard Wells is here. Has the chief to come up and join us for this and the next item as well.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good evening, chief.
I bring money.
That's always a good thing. Always, Warren Committee likes to hear that.
So a little bit of the background. This dates back, I believe, it's way before I was even a supervisor, I think. It dates back to probably the middle 1980s, late 1980s, when the town made a decision to, we've always had a police tow company, for as long as I can remember, someone who does our toes. In sometime in the 1980s, it may date all the way back to Chief Metelliano. We went into a procedure where we go out and bid our exclusive rights to tow for the Milton Police Department by contract. And over the past 20-plus years, I think there's only been three companies that have done the towing. And tonight, I'm going to recommend to you a change in the tow company from the current company we have, Blue Hills Towing, which we've had for the past four years, to Auto Service and Tire from Matapan, which we had for 10 years, many years ago. As I noted in my recommendation to Anne Marie, all three of the companies that bid on this contract, Schlag is out of Quincy, Blue Hills Towing out of Weymouth, and Auto Tire and Service from Matapan, have extensive backgrounds in police tow operations. I mean, we have all the confidence that they could handle anything from the smallest toes to the largest of tow operations. So this recommendation tonight is really based on the high bid. And in this case, Auto Tire and Service on a three-year bid beginning July 1st of this year, extending for three years, bid a total package of $191,322. And that breaks down into $53,774 in what I call, in beginning of fiscal year in July, $63,774 beginning a year from now, and $73,774 in the third year. And this contract, as all of our three-year contracts, always does have a provision that the town, if they wish to extend it for a fourth year, we can do that, and that's been done in the past. So my recommendation to you tonight would be to award this bid in the amount of $191,322 to Auto Tire and Service of Matapan.
Is this an increase from the prior contract?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I think the four-year total, Anne Marie, am I correct, was just around $190,000 for the, yeah. So this is, I was actually, when I saw the numbers, I was like, wow. So it is an area where we are able to generate some pretty good money for the town. And it comes at a time when we always need it, so. That would be my recommendation to you tonight. And I thank Blue Hills, they did a great job in the four years that they had the contract. And I explained that to the owner today when I called him, telling him that I'd made the recommendation.
That's a lot of towing, isn't it, for like $53,774 from one town?
In a year. A 28 in a snowstorm in Milton?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, particularly in the winter months, breakdowns, accidents. When we get harsh weather, we, I mean, we have both 28 and 138, so you're going to do exclusively all the toes on both of those roads and
Even on the state roads?
Yeah, we do all those, covered exclusively by us, all the accidents, everything. So that, the only road that is non-acute will be Blue Hills Parkway, which is on, in 93 as well, which is a state police contract.
Any other discussion? Or if not, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm going to motion to award a contract for towing services for 2015, 2017 to Auto Services, Auto Service and Tire, Inc. of Matapan, with an option for a 24-month extension.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, yes.
No, no discussion.
All right, all in favor? Wait a minute, Town Administrator. Okay, we also need to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract. So why don't we, should we do this as a separate motion? Okay.
Okay, well, I'll move, let's move on this then first, I guess, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And then I'll move that the Town Administrator be authorized to sign the towing contract.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for that reminder. Okay, the next item is the taxi rules and regulations.
Final draft, we're ready to go. So I thank the chair for asking us to take a look at this, because it really was an eye-opener for me. You know, we have cab service in Milton, and we do have Hackney regulations, much like Boston and Quincy, but there are still communities that don't. But just, I did a little bit of review here. Canton, for example, they don't charge anything for the license, they just require that you have the license, kind of like we have you come and get a yard sale permit. Dedham, we did not, we don't know what, Weymouth, it's a $20, $5 fee per vehicle. Plus, they have multiple stands in their community, and it's 50 per stand per license. So you have to be licensed to be on the individual stands. Quincy, it's 50, and they've also gone to a medallion system. And I think that, I think their hope, Canton, I mean, Boston and Cambridge have medallions, which are privately owned. You actually own the medallion. If you owned it, I could buy it from you. And they go for thousands and thousands of dollars. But even though the medallions are at $32 for a one-year license, and $75 for a three-year license. So we're going to stick with our previous rates, which is $25 for a Hackney license, which expires every two years, and the additional $100 licensing per year, per cab in the town for the existing cabs that you've licensed to operate in this town. I do have one other change. If you note in Section 4, under penalties, which is the final page of the draft, the prior violations of the rules and regulations of the Hackney laws within the town, a prior violation only gave this board the ability to fine up to $300. And some of the types of violations that we do see, we think that should have a much higher level ceiling. It doesn't say you have to fine to a thousand, but we think that you should have that ability to fine up to $1,000 on a violation. So that would be the only other recommendation, other than the languages that we've proposed and the changes you've given to us and that we've included in this final draft. And I know that both John Flynn and Deputy Chief King both have looked at this as well, so. That would, I hope this is our final draft, that we're good to go.
Yeah, no, I think, when we were here, whenever we talked about this last, we talked about the fact we need to publish some kind of a notice in the newspapers.
We will do that. We'll publish the whole thing. We're going to publish the entire document.
Oh, you are going to publish the whole document?
The whole document.
Does that have to be done before we approve it?
That's what I'm wondering, do we, because usually it should be a public notice period so that the public can comment, and then we'd approve it. I think that would normally be how it would work.
It's an old, it's an old regulation that Mr. Flynn found. I'm not sure exactly what it said, what, I thought it just said we had to post them, had to make a public notice of it. It was very vague in its wording, that we had to make a public, so I believe if Anne Marie was John, asked how much we, and so we've decided to post the whole thing, that's what we're going to do.
So I understand that once the board adopted regulations and regulations, that's what has to be
Made public. That would make sense. That would make sense. So we will post it right away.
The whole document has to be have a test or posted.
Okay. All right. I think all the regulated industries are probably a little different. I mean, some that I work in, you need to go out and actually publish what you're proposing to do before you can adopt it as a final reg. But in this case, it may be, you know, there may be a statute that provides something different here.
I don't, because I think John would have told us to go and post this before we came back here. I didn't read it that way. I think he just read that we do post it.
Mr. Clark's giving me a look over there. I don't know whether he has anything different.
Rules and regulations. I know rules and regs for the planning board have to go to, have to be published for two weeks, hold a public hearing, and then it's enacted.
Yeah, and I thought we said there wasn't a public hearing requirement for this one.
No, there is no
Yeah, I thought we looked into that issue.
There is no public hearing requirement.
No.
Not on these rules and regs.
Just the changes, the Hackney, and I believe this came under the Hackney law. And I think he found this under like a statute pertaining to Hackneys in the Commonwealth. Because it was one I was unaware of. I was unaware of. I'll do whatever you want. Do you want to?
I don't mind moving it if you want to.
The only thing I was aware of is if we post it, does it drag it out longer if someone tries to come back? And I
Yeah, I mean, I suppose we could prove it subject to further com, you know.
Subject to further legal review. If it's not, you go with your vote. If it has to, you do whatever the legal requirement is.
For the legal review or public comment?
And the statute didn't say anything about that either. Didn't say anything about public comment or public hearing. It just said you had to post them publicly, for the public to be able to see them.
Public notice.
I'm thinking Paula went out of her cheer to go run and check the, check the rule on this.
Do you want to? I'll
I'll throw the motion out there now. I'll move that we adopt the new taxi rules and regulations and the recommendations for fare increases.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? I mean, the only risk is if we go ahead and approve, we find out we needed a public comment.
You have to reopen it.
Or just come back and have to take it up again.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's
Okay, so Doesn't take effect Statutes as such rules and orders shall not take effect until they have been published at least once in a newspaper, so.
The last time they were met was in 1987.
That's correct. Long time.
It was published after.
After.
So you can approve them, and then they're published, and they don't take effect until they have been published at least once?
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Aye, unanimous.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Number 11 on our agenda is relating to the Houghtons Pond request for, from the DCR regarding water and sewer fees. Is anyone here to speak to that? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion. A motion to waive the water and sewer connection fees, as well as the.
I and I mitigation.
I and I mitigation fees in the amount of $35,475.
A second.
For the Houghtons Pond ball field rest, restroom building currently under construction.
Now, a second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion?
Just a comment, I did have a discussion with the DCR commissioner about this, not with respect to the waiver itself, but with respect to perhaps at least giving it some consideration, you know, for a future skating rink lease, but, and he took it under advisement.
Yeah, I know you were meeting with him on the, on the Yulin Rink, but that would be a separate issue, but any other discussion on this particular motion regarding the, the baseball field? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, next item is to approve a recognition letter for another Eagle Scout Court of Honor. One of the, one of the nicer things to do, I find, in this job, is going through these Eagle Scout.
Yeah, they are, they really are.
Award ceremonies, they're very nice. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and sign letters of recognition for Eagle Scout candidates, Connor, Robert Murphy, Jack Michael Clark, that will be presented at the Court of Honor Ceremony on Sunday, June 15, 2014, at 4:00 PM in Cunningham Hall.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations to Connor and Jack. Are any of you, are we all going to go to that, or are some of us gonna go to that? I'm available that day, it is Father's Day, so, you know, both of you may have plans.
I'll be in Philadelphia.
We have some time to figure that one out.
I'll be around, I'm sure, so, if I'm around, I will definitely go.
I won't be around that time, but it is a good time.
Okay, number 13, airplane noise discussion. We added this to the agenda to talk a little bit about this issue, it's been a while since we discussed it, we did send a letter back in April to both Massport and the FAA, and both of them have referred the matter to the Logan Airport CAC, and we've had some more inquiries recently from the public, emails, calls, I have, I'm sure you have as well, regarding this issue, which is an, it was an ongoing issue for some people, but certain, depends on where you live in town, some people aren't affected at all by it, other people are very affected by it.
Right.
So, this is just a chance for us to set aside some time to have any discussion about what we might want to consider doing, what next steps might be. Citizen speak tonight, Cheryl Flightman was in, talking about a potential committee, and I know we've discussed that a little bit in the past, but have not taken that action yet.
I definitely think it's, it's time that this board started taking some action, you know, by maybe appointing somebody here, and, you know, having some neighborhood meetings around Milton, and spreading them into Randolph, and into Dorchester, and getting some feedback there, and maybe getting everybody on board, and tackling the FAA and Massport. This is what people that I've been meeting with recently have been requesting, so I'm glad you put it on the agenda, and glad we're talking about it, because it seems to be snowballing now. It started off with a small group, and they deserve credit for starting it off, but it is snowballing, I, I'm personally taking more of an interest in it. And we definitely, when you see the statistics that, you know, 60%, I believe, more planes are flying over Milton today than seven years ago, that's, that's a major statistic, you know, that, that we should definitely be tackling and looking into.
You have some contacts, at one of the meetings a few months ago, Dennis, you mentioned you had some contacts in Dorchester.
Right.
Others who may be interested in getting more involved with this issue.
Well, there is four, four, what do you call them?
What do you know, fuck?
Community associations, neighborhood associations. Lower Mills, Cedar Grove, Hope's Hill, and Port Norfolk. Now, Port Norfolk did say, and they're actually in a location where the planes are the lowest going over them, and they said they actually liked the planes, I was shocked, and didn't want me to make a presentation to them.
Did they say why, just out of curiosity?
They just liked the planes. They said it's part of the city living over there.
Are they just so used to it that it's not an issue for them?
Maybe so, yeah, but Lower Mills, and Cedar Grove, and Hope's Hill definitely want, want us to make a presentation and, and come on board.
So, a presentation, something that, that you're thinking of meeting with some of your people you know in that area?
Correct, well, they'll put their neighborhood association together, one of us will come in and make a presentation, there is a presentation floating around Milton with statistics, bring that in, present it to them, and then get them on board with the Milton group, and start sending letters and getting support.
So, what about the issue of pulling a committee together? Does that make any sense?
Well, I missed that, Tom.
I couldn't hear with the plane.
Oh.
Pulling a committee together?
I think, well, I know that one of the issues when Congressman Lynch and Capuano were at the meeting that the group of citizens organized back in January, I think it was Congressman Lynch who said that because of that litigation that Cheryl even mentioned tonight, he, the FAA, or it was Massport, was not willing to meet with him and a member of that group, they were only willing to meet with him because of the litigation, so I think whether our individuals who are parties to that litigation, you know, that is something we'd have to think about in terms of how that would impact the town, because we do have two representatives on the CAC, and we do have a request into, through a letter into Massport and the FAA, that they have referred back to the CAC. So, if we, if we were to decide to appoint a committee, I think we need to give some thought to what impact the litigation might have on the town's overall interests.
That's a good point. I mean, I guess the only, and I think trying to get the community meetings together is a good idea, you know, but if it's not done in an organized way, then it just kinda falls apart after, after the meetings, you know, nothing, there's nothing to kinda bring it back together again.
If we were gonna have five or six meetings, we'll say two in Milton, and four over in the Dorchester area, and maybe one in Randolph, they should all be within a week, a week of each other. That's my take, just so that we, everything is fresh in everybody's mind, and some people can spill over into other meetings and make comments at that. I think it's a useful thing if we keep them all together.
And then how would you carry the ball forward?
Well, we'd see who would be interested in joining up in this committee. I know we all got four or five emails this week about the airplane traffic. I emailed them back individually and asked them, if we put a committee together, would you be interested? They all said yes.
You're talking about a town committee?
A town committee, yes.
Yeah, I would, a town committee, I would just be concerned about combining it with anyone who's a party to the litigation, because that might impact.
Absolutely.
Whether Massport or the FAA would be willing to have meetings with the committee, or, so I think that's something for us to think about.
Well, I think it's quite clear right now that the FAA will not, period, because they will not talk to individual towns, so even if we brought a Milton committee together, they won't talk to us. They deal with the CAC, and their letter was quite clear on that. So, I mean, I have no problem with a committee, I just don't know if we, if we'd get an audience.
Yeah, I think what Capuano and Lynch, when they were both in, what they really talked about was identifying a couple of key issues, and trying to get as many communities together to focus on.
On those issues.
A manageable number of items, and in our letter, really focused on the four runways, rather than anything else, you know, and that's something that the CAC would be concerned with taking.
If you could pull that off, yeah, that would, that would probably be something that might work, but, but you'd need a good number of communities to, to buy into it in a joint letter, if you will, saying we all support this, whatever this may be. You know, but, I mean, we've tried to reach out to a number of them, and there's just no interest. You could try again.
That's true, the town administrator had some calls with other towns a while back.
Randolph, Canton, yes.
Yeah, there's just zero interest.
Depending on whether the towns are impacted or not. Randolph, I guess, isn't really having a problem with noise.
No, we recently just spoke with, the assistant town administrator reached out to Randolph, and they had no issues.
He thinks so.
Yeah, Canton.
No issues in Canton?
Nope.
They have a big issue in, in Height Park.
They don't even have a CAC rep.
Right, but in Height Park, you do have a big issue, and in Dorchester.
Height Park, it's in vocal, and all that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, would it make sense, Dennis, for you to reach out to some of your, the neighborhood groups in Dorchester?
Yes.
You've already connected with?
Yeah.
See what their interest would be in whether, do they even have a CAC rep? Boston must have CAC reps.
I don't know. They must, I would guess, but.
I'll reach out to State Representative Dan Colonnain as well. Who is actually on the Mayor Walsh's advisory team, so maybe he can talk to the mayor as well.
That'd be fine.
Okay, that would be good.
Who's from Dorchester, obviously.
So maybe we just start with some community meetings, and see where it goes from there? I think so.
Any meetings in Milton, or reaching out in terms of conversation with Dorchester? I know, because the citizen group here has already had a number of meetings on this.
Right.
I don't know, that that would generate more support, or, than there already is, among the people who are directly affected.
Right, and I guess the only other, the only other thing might be to, you know, again, especially where the summer months are coming up, and, you know, the Washington is, will slow down, they have the Congressman Lynch and Capuano back again to kinda follow up on our last meeting, might not be a bad idea.
Or maybe even at least to start with reaching out to them, and seeing, you know, telling them, we did send a letter, I think we even copied them on our letter, and then it's been returned to the CAC, what other, what other help can they give us?
And, I'll, I don't remember exactly what they, what they said at that meeting, but there were some things that they were gonna try and bring forward to FAA, and I don't know if any of that has happened or not happened, or.
So, do we wanna ask the town, I hate to put more work in the town administrator's play, do we wanna ask the town administrator to handle this, or, I, do we go down a couple of tracks, and Dennis, you talk with your contacts in Dorchester, and we follow up with the congressional delegation?
I think that would be a good idea, so Dennis, continue on with, with that, and try and garner some support from those other communities, and at the same time, reach out to Congressman Lynch and Capuano to see if, if there is maybe time for another, just a follow-up meeting, just to, where do we stand now, you know, have we made any progress at the federal level? And then I'll report back.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll put this back on a future agenda.
Yes.
Okay, next item is the town administrator's report.
I don't have any report, Madam Chairman.
Okay, next is the chairman's report, I get to do this for the first time, so I made a few notes. A few recent events, the town administrator and I both attended Fire Chief Jack Grant's swearing-in ceremony yesterday as the new president of the Massachusetts Fire Chiefs Association, it was a very nice ceremony, it was at Curry College, and he has a one-year term as the, as the new president, and the, they also swore in two vice presidents from other towns, so, it was a very nice event, and well-deserved honor and recognition for, for Jack, so congratulations to Chief Grant. We also attended, Tom, you were there, actually, we were all there at the groundbreaking ceremony at different times, last week for the hospice.
Yes, that was a great event.
Yeah, it was a very nice event, and I think they're planning on breaking ground pretty quickly on that, so we should start seeing some movement, this is the hospice on Reed'sdale Road, and they're planned to open, I think, early next year, they're, throughout the winter, they'll be doing the interior work, but they should have all the exterior work done by, I think, by the fall, before winter. So that's, that's something that's coming up fairly quickly. Last night, people probably know, we had a meeting on the East Milton Parking Deck project that, that Bill Clark ran along with the Howard Stein Hudson, the architect, so we're looking for feedback from the public, I think that, it was taped, it might have been shown live.
It was, it was shown live, and it will continue to replay as well.
So if anyone's watching that and has thoughts on, or comments that they want to offer, they can contact the selectmen's office, they can contact Mr. Clark, or, or any of us to provide feedback. There will be a follow-up meeting, hopefully, the third week in June, we don't have a definite date yet, but that's the point at which the architect will be back, and I think they said possibly someone from the Department of Transportation might even be there at that time, too.
Well, some more specific drawings.
Yes, yeah, more, more specific drawings. Okay, so those are the, those are some of the recent events we've been covering. I, I had put on, that we talk about, and we already talked about this a little bit, about the format and scheduling of the board meetings, so I think the consensus from earlier tonight was we'll continue to meet at 6:30 throughout the summer, and then once we hit September, we'll move the meetings till 7:00.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. What do we wanna do for the summer? Do we wanna do two meetings a month?
I think two, and then if we need a third, we can always throw one in.
I think come the fall, we should probably think about a third, one as, you know, as a default, regular.
Certainly when you hit budget season, and in that area, yeah.
Yeah, and this, you know, I'm told by a lot of people, this board used to meet monthly, I mean, not, we used to meet weekly, four times a month.
Yes, we did.
So, there may have been a time at which they met monthly, I don't know, but they used to meet weekly, so, it just depends on, there are a lot of projects going on right now. It does seem that, that we need, you know, we need the time to make sure we're adequately considering everything.
I know personally, for me, Katie Aldigan, a week in June, two weeks in July, and one week in August.
Yeah, and it makes sense for the summer with vacations for everyone, including the people and the staff, and all of us to have a lighter schedule in the summer, I think that's been pretty common.
Yeah.
One thing that I thought we might want to do is follow up policy that the school committee does, citizen speak, now, tonight, we had citizen speak, we didn't respond to any of the citizen speak comments, and typically when a citizen comes in to bring up a topic, I know sometimes we've responded to them right away, and had, engaged in a dialogue with a citizen who's here for citizen speak, but I think we don't really wanna do that, the point of citizen speak is really try to limit it to three minutes, let people say what they wanna say, and sometimes we, if someone's been in here for any number of times before on a particular topic, we might know what it's going to be about, a lot of times, we don't know what it's gonna be about, but the school committee has a citizen speak, and then later on in their agenda, they have an old business item, and they have citizen speak response, and what they do is, for example, in, in week one, if somebody comes in and raises an issue at citizen speak, they don't respond to it right away, they wait until week two, and then at the next meeting, that's when, under old business, if there's any information that they've had to gather and put together, then they respond to it at that time, and I think unless something, something really needs an immediate response, if somebody comes in, says something that's just completely wrong, and it impacts something we might be talking on that night, or something that's really egregious, we probably should respond at that time, but, but if there's just a general question or general comments, and we can wait until the next meeting, I think that's probably a good policy for us to think about adopting.
I like that. Yeah, as, as long as people understand that it's still not a dialogue, it's just our response back, you know, so that we don't bog down meetings, you know, I'm fine with that.
Well, some of the people might not even be here, so if we, you know, if we were, if something came up at citizen speak tonight, and we put it off for a meeting two weeks from now, then chances are that person won't be here, and we'll just be responding to it, maybe putting some information out to the public, and it'll be later on in the agenda, so that it wouldn't be right after someone speaks. The other thing that the school committee does, that I thought for our meeting format, we might wanna consider, is they have a next meeting agenda items section on every agenda, where towards the end of the meeting, if someone from the board wants to put a topic on an agenda for the following meeting, or a later meeting, then that's a good time to bring it up, so that the word gets out there, and then we put it on, and we have a more complete discussion at a later date. So I thought, so is that agreeable, those two?
I like that, yeah.
Okay. So Paula, we'll ask you to add these to the regular agenda, all the boilerplate agenda items. I also thought the other thing in terms of the meeting schedule is, we're all on different committees, so I'm on the solid waste or capital, and we don't always go back and report during the year, the way we probably should, obviously, if there's nothing to report, there's nothing to report, but it might make sense as we're going through the year, that if one of us is on a committee, that we're, to the extent we can, that we're coming in and updating the board, and putting it on in agenda items, so, you know, for instance, the capital committee report, maybe early in the fall, even if there's not a lot to report, maybe just what the capital committee's thinking for the coming year, that sort of thing. of thing.
Yeah, and talking about the school committee, that's what we used to do as well. So somebody every week would talk about Finance Committee, Health and Wellness Committee, somebody would just give a report every week, whoever was on that committee. So I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, and it doesn't even necessarily, in our case, have to be weekly, but just as needed, I think, would at least.
Correct.
Keep things on, keep things on everyone's radar, and.
Do you want to confirm some dates in June, other than the third?
The date, uh.
The seventeenth?
Seventeenth? Oh, the seventeenth.
Yes. Okay, those are really the only points I wanted to bring up, I thought the school committee had some good ideas that we could try to follow. Okay, then, the next item on our agenda is just a motion for executive session, so I will move that we enter executive session to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and to discuss collective bargaining, contract negotiations, patrol officer's contract, and fire chief's contract, and to discuss litigation, Kevin Mern case, believing that having these discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to return to open session to adjourn.
Second.